Like, what we did was pursue an example of what they gave us as a similar process, and had that reviewed by an environmental consultant.
Yeah, I'm less concerned, hold on, I'm less concerned with what the operator of a facility is telling us. I'm more concerned with an independent, verifiable, environmental evaluation of it.
That's great, but we've been talking about for an hour and a half now about other uses, and Tom Myers comes down, and he's able to rattle off the guy's name. Did you write it down? I'm not happy, no, I'm, I'm, I get to talk now.
Certainly.
I'm not happy with the way the community development staff has handled this from start to finish. It's been a mess from, from the very beginning. This has been going on for months.
I would say that if, if you want to have that conversation with our staff, the best
I just did.
Place for that is not at the board meeting. And so, let's stay focused on this, and the approval of authorization for our staff to draft the text amendment, or not.
I, I agree with both of those guys about trying to make it a smaller identity. And I agree with Theresa, as far as, I'm not ready to, I'd like to find more information about the terror hold guy. I'm glad the gentleman from Larkin brought up some points
Yeah.
That we, we can go look for it. I think our staff does have to talk to the people in Ennis and to the fire marshal.
Sure.
And not all of us call them, just let staff handle this. I'm not ready to, I don't know, it worries me that none of them knew what a tier is when you're in the gas and petroleum manufacturing. OSHA had to have, has to be involved. I don't know.
I think that's further down the process, since they're not currently running an operation, and I'm not, I'm not here to defend a petitioner, but they're not currently running one of these, so they don't have insurance for one, so they don't need that information yet. They will, you'll become pretty intimate with it pretty quickly if it gets approved, but at this point, if you're not running one, you wouldn't know that, because that's part of that process. We're not that, we're not that far down the track yet for them to, to get that information. The guy in, the guy in Texas, in Ennis, he knows, because he's running one. But he's not running it very often, is what, I mean, that's what I heard, right? He's not running it very often. He'd like to be running it more, which begs the question, why isn't he running it more? Because he doesn't have somebody to buy the fuel. But it sounds like some things have changed there, and it's a little bit more complicated than I can wrap my head around. I, I would like to see us review this again after we have...
Additional information.
Well, additional information that we need to research and do on our own, our own independent studies. I have spent more time on this subject than I have in the six years I've been on the board, trying to find information. I asked for additional information of other plants that do this to Tim, and he replied to me, and he gave me the Ennis plant information, which we kind of knew, because it was a plant commission. But now Gus rattles off three or four others that are doing it. So I'm a little concerned that, Tim, you didn't know any other ones, but if we could get the text amendment, kind of, what can we do to narrow the scope, plus our research and information, then we can revisit the issue and maybe have a, a little bit more informed discussion, because I felt like I didn't get a lot more information tonight than I got from watching the plant commission.
Do you want staff to start spending time on this now, or do you want to wait till you have more information?
I need to know what we can do to narrow the scope. What can we do to narrow the scope? I don't know what legally we, what kind of legal parameters do we have to narrow that scope? How narrow can we make it?
Well, what I, what I think I'm hearing is just that you would want a new classification. I mean, right now, it's just the text amendment. I think, you know, where the rubber meets the road is with the special, if you decide to allow it as a special use, then what happens with the special use, and what conditions you can implement there. But as far as the text amendment, it would just be, you know, the creation of a new category that we would believe that this specifically fits in.
Okay, so it wouldn't be gas and petroleum, we wouldn't open up that door for all M2s to have?
Well, it would still apply to all M2s, because, I mean, if I'm understanding, it would be a special use than a M2.
It would be whatever scientific process it is.
It would just be whatever this specifically is. We also have to be careful, though, however, we can't, you know, we have to define it as a use, not necessarily dictating a process.
Correct, yeah. And that's what I mean, that's what I'm asking for, is what parameters, what walls can we put up? And then we can do our research and have a discussion about how we can make that work or not. That's, I guess that's what I'm looking for, is...
Yeah, and I mean, I guess the answer would be, we can create a narrower classification if there's something else that we believe this is, but we wouldn't necessarily want to say how or how not you do that use. So if the board doesn't believe that this is gas manufacturing, that's fine, but we need to figure out then what it is, and then, you know, whether or not the board wants to allow that specific use.
And it's, I think less about how we, as the board characterize the, whatever manufacturing's going on there, and what kind of case law can back up that zoning.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So from what I'm hearing, what do we do? What would you like to do?
I'm the opposite of what Doug just said. I want to do the research first before I ask anyone on staff to spend any time on this, because if I do the research and come down on the side of, oh, no way, I don't want this, I don't want them wasting time putting together something that I'm going to vote no on.
I had a couple, just a couple phone calls that Rich can make to those guys that Tommy mentioned, is not going to hurt time, or money, or anything else, just so he could get some kind of idea. And I don't think we ought to wait four months to string this sucker out either, so...
No, I don't want to string them along either, but I want to feel very comfortable and have that understanding on what they're doing, and then the part where we can make it that smaller box. I do agree with that, but I just need to feel more comfortable and much more, feeling much more knowledgeable about what is happening before I'm going to ask staff to spend any time on this.
Okay. So thank you for the conflicting comments and remarks.
That's why you make the big bucks.
I think it, yeah, I think it makes sense at this point to have our attorney look at narrowing. Let's not take action on, on this vote, because it seems like we're pretty well undecided at this point whether or not we're moving forward, or how we are. Staff too, look at the zoning. Please share the Huff and Huff report with them. If we can get additional, I think it's pretty clear, we need, at least I do, additional information from the petitioner on this plant that they're building. And we'll reconvene once all that information is, is set. Those two things, I'm trying to think about, am I missing anything else from the discussion?
Is there, I mean, you want, let me share the impression with Huff and Huff, you want additional information from the petitioner? Is there information you need from staff to help you with your decision, besides us looking at narrowing?
Well, the, yeah, the question's from Huff and Huff, that they, they're talking about controls and process, and basically mitigating the impact, should there be any sort of an issue?
That'll come from the petitioner, though.
Right, and reviewed by Huff and Huff before we talk again, yeah.
Is there, like, you're talking about doing, doing your research, is there stuff you're looking for from staff? And I guess just let me know.
No, I'm going to look up the suggestions that were made of the other companies in the various locations.
And if, if staff could, and I think you're really good at this, provide everything to everybody once you get anything, so. All right, so we'll table that. Sounds good? All right, so move on to item K this evening is, or I'm sorry, L, is extension of the landscape maintenance contract with Cornerstone Partners. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you tonight is a request for the approval of the contract extension to Cornerstone Partners for the village's landscape maintenance services for 2019. Cornerstone was awarded the contract in the fall of 2016, and has continued to demonstrate the ability to perform all aspects of the contract at a high level of service. The original contract was for one year, with the option for two single one-year extensions. This would be the last year of the available, last year of the extensions available per that contract. This work is for the services in common areas throughout the village, as well as the SSAs. This contract extension would also be with no increasing in pricing. So at this time, I'm asking for approval for the contract extension with Cornerstone Partners. However, if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time.
Thank you, Mark.
Earlier today, I asked administrators of all if Cornerstone had met all of their obligations in a timely manner, had not been, the village and the village residents are paying a premium to Cornerstone based upon historical bids. I think we're paying $70,000, $80,000 more per year. Have they hit their, their benchmarks?
To my knowledge, they've, they've hit all the dates that are required per the contract. This year was a non-mulch year. We went to an alternating mulching year, so this year would have been a cultivation year. So those were some of the deadlines that were indicated in the contract, but the cultivation was done prior to the date specified in the contract.
Any quality of work issues?
In, in my experiences in changeover in personnel, since I've been managing the contract, it's been very good, in my opinion.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
Item 40, thank you, Mark. Item M this evening is bulk fuel purchase contract with Fleece Oil Company. Mark?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Before you tonight is a request for the approval for fuel purchasing contract with Fleece Oil Company. The view, the Village of Montgomery has historically purchased fuel from different vendors without contract in the past. This is a kind of a typical operation for many municipalities. The Village of Montgomery recently participated in a RFP for fuel pricing, along with the Village of Oswego, Oswego Fire District, and Oswego Township. The intent behind the RFP was to gain better pricing possible for multiple agencies participating, which would increase quantities and promote better pricing. The result of the RFP was two companies submitting bids, Warren Oil Company and Fleece Oil Company. After calculating pricing for different fuels and quantities that the Village of Montgomery uses, Fleece Oil was the low bidder for Montgomery. Fleece Oil is the village's current supplier. Their level of service and ability to meet the demands of the village has been exceptional to this point. Another advantage to retaining Fleece Oil is the fuel supplier has tank monitoring system on our fuel system, which allows us to reduce staff time in manually monitoring the tank levels, and having to call in for scheduled deliveries. So essentially, they're able to view the levels and maintain a high level for us at all times. So it's a huge benefit to the village. So at this time, I'm asking for approval for the bulk fuel, fuel purchasing contract with Fleece Oil Company. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time.
How much did we save by bidding it?
The savings was honestly not as much as we, they originally anticipated when they went out for RFP. I don't have that exact information, but I could get it for you if you wanted.
And why are we doing, if we always did, so we didn't save a lot of money, why do we go with a four-year contract when we never had a contract before?
The initial intent behind this was to kind of lock in a primary contractor per organization. Each organization was able, as part of the RFP, to defer to whichever contractor they wanted to. So it's kind of a unique setup. The idea is, behind this is, is different villages had different commodities, or different facilities that to accommodate. For example, Oswego, the Village of Oswego has smaller-sized tanks, which there have to utilize onsite fueling during their snow events, because basically their, their tanks are smaller. So their whole potential or reason behind this was to go out to bid, so they made sure they were capturing the, the best bid price they could for the circumstances that they have.
Are they going with fees too?
I believe, I don't have that information. I believe, if I remember correctly in the emails, I believe Oswego Fire Protection District went with fees. So just a background, for the Village of Montgomery, our purchasing is higher quantities in gasoline. Some of the other communities, for example, the fire district had substantially higher in diesel costs. So the offset for us was, Fleece Oil was cheaper for gasoline. So when I put the numbers together for our average uses of gasoline per year compared to diesel, the end pricing was Fleece Oil was cheaper than Warren Oil.
We use Fleece Oil as well where I work. We've never had any issues with them. We've used them for years.
Fantastic.
All right. If there's no other comments, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Night carries. Moving on to item N, it's ordinance 1835, amending section 18 and a half of the village code. This is our tree ordinance. We talked about it before. This is the second reading. Do you have any update?
Thank you, Mr. President. So before you tonight is the second reading for the ordinance 1835, amending section 18 and a half of the village code. This amendment is intended to improve and provide best management practices to protect all village-owned parkway trees. Included in your packet is a brief summary of the amendments. So just to go over some of those highlighted points, and I apologize as I'm, like I said, coming into this a little bit late. From what I understand, the, the major reason or force factor behind this movement is to comply with the guidelines of the grant that we applied for, as well as the ISA, Tree City USA certification. So many of these things were just kind of some general housekeeping, some outdated verbiage that was in the ordinance that we're just simply kind of updating. So as you'll see in your summary, there is indication of a tree board, which is virtually non-existent to this point. Past practice of the village has been, the responsibility has fallen on the public works director and/or the village arborist. So that is one of the amendments that we are looking to make. Clarification of property owners' responsibility to care for their own trees that may encroach on public property. There's just some kind of cleanup language as far as that goes. Giving the village the ability to enforce homeowners to trim their personally-owned trees on, that are encroaching on village right-of-way. Established guidelines used for determining cause in public, for public tree removal. That's basically giving us the guidelines to use for the ISA, for the tree risk assessment program. Requires protection of the village trees for collateral damage during construction near village-owned trees. Just once again, allows us to protect the infrastructure that we've paid to put in place by being able to protect it in cases where we have established trees and undeveloped, once those areas become developed. Strengthen from, protection from damage caused to improper care and practices such as tree topping and volcano mulching, which is also, creates public safety concerns. So the volcano mulching, to give people kind of an example, I'm sure Steve's familiar with, people tend to pile and make what we call a volcano around the trunk of the tree. That causes tree rot, which causes a lot of issues with the tree, and can, can shorten the lifespan dramatically. Changes in sidewalk clearance, this was one of the big ones, that we wanted to increase from seven feet to nine feet, giving more clearance on the public walkways. So it would be just a changing of those levels. As I mentioned, this update brings in compliance with the Morton Arboretum's terms for the grant that is filed in the Tree City USA certification.
Awesome. Thanks, Mark.
We have Clark out there cutting trees now. My neighbor's tree was trimmed today.
So we have Kramer Tree Service we contracted for our large tree pruning, which is, we use them for the trees that are larger than what the village is equipped to handle. So they are performing those. They should be wrapped up this week with that work.
All right, thank you. Any comments?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
Are you doing the test here? Oh, okay.
I am.
All right. Moving on to item O, is it TIF number two rebate?
Certainly, I will take care of that. Summarize quickly. I agree with Tom, the process did not run the way it was anticipated to run this year. I have spoken with staff about the things we're going to do differently next year. We will not schedule the JRB until we know we have the final numbers. And even if we are not recommending removing any new properties from the, from the rebate group, we will still seek concurrence from the, you know, from the JRB. That being said, we did provide the information approximately two and a half weeks before tonight's meeting, so people had time to look at it, and have brought it to you the first meeting we've had since we received the final information. So tonight, to move the process along, you know, there's a 14-day waiting period if you don't do anything. You can waive that tonight, which means then we can turn right around and submit it to the county. We do not control how quickly the county gets the rebates out, but we can control how quickly we get the information to them. And that is it.
And that meeting has to be held at a certain time, all the time in December, right? When you said...
I mean, it doesn't have to be a specific date, so we'll just schedule it later, when we make sure we have...
The JRB meeting has to be in December?
For some reason, I think it, I do believe it has to be in December, Bill.
Yes.
So, so we just have to, you know, it may cut down how far in advance we can schedule it, until we know we're going to have the, we'll make sure we have the...
So I guess, worst-case scenario, we generally have estimates of what's going to happen. Hey, here's this parcel, we're going to rebate this, we're not...
Right. To me, the bigger concern, I mean, the, the amount, I mean, is obviously important to the groups, what are we rebating? The bigger concern is, are we recommending removing any additional properties?
Yes.
And that, we should know. We may not have the full, you know, we may be estimating the numbers, but I'm hoping we'll have the final numbers. But we should definitely know whether or not we're recommending removing a property. And we can, to me, that's the bigger concern that, that the fire district generally has. So...
And the, the other issue, and I called you the other day about it, the $53,000 for a report, is that, as we thought, it's an ongoing thing?
Yes, it is.
Not finalized yet?
It is ongoing. There's some things we're...
Still working on?
Working on that we, I guess, don't want to, to discuss publicly at this point.
I get it.
When, when was that supposed to be done? Is it just the, the report?
You know, I kind of, honestly, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, so I can look and see.
Okay.
And I'm certain that our attorney or engineer has the additional information that you're asking about.
Okay. Tom, you're in agreement with what Jeff said, as far as the, the solutions to get you the information quicker and those sorts of things?
Yeah, no, I...
Okay.
We just need a concurrence of the board, correct, to direct staff?
Well, it's not for action, we might... Well, because the thing is, is if you want to waive the 14-day waiting period...
And it just takes the concurrence of the board?
Speeds it up, right?
Right. But the, there's a waiting period if the board wants to have time to consider, you know, review otherwise.
It's not here, and Stan's not here, but... One suggestion, if that's, if this is legal, let's try that. If it's all right with the board to waive the 14 days, if you're, if that's where you want to go, subject to Stan saying that that's okay.
That's fine.
Is that legal? I'm good with that. But, but again, it's the concurrence of the board, so if the four of us were in favor of it, it wouldn't really matter, but...
Right.
Out of respect, I'm with you.
It's a courtesy.
Yeah. Okay. So is there a motion on item O, TIF number two rebate, to waive the 14-day waiting period? Yes.
Second.
What Matt said. All right, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Night carries 40. Thank you. All right, moving on, items for discussion, website redesign. By the way, after 10 o'clock, we're going to start having Chief Smith do all of the presentations.
All right. Remember, we discussed this before, and you guys had some, I'll just quickly go over the changes since the last time you saw it. They made the bar at the top thicker so that the logo moved up into it. We changed, before, these were all, these columns were all the same color heading. They have changed that. And you can see behind it, it was just white before. They've added this brick behind it. We have another one I can show you where the brick is, which is slightly less.
Yeah. I liked the first one.
First one.
I'm not a fan of brick.
I mean, they took...
It looks like a wall.
They took it from the, the building, is what it is. It's, they just took a section of the...
It would be cool if it was the path with the names on it, but then you'd have somebody's name on the website all the time. That wouldn't be good either.
Then with the interior pages, it's basically the same, except instead of, instead of brick, you've got the wood from the, from the barn...
The blues.
Behind it. So...
I like it.
Much better.
And we are going to move forward with this. We will let them know that we're good, and then I believe after February 1, they will start converting our data over.
Cool.
So, that is it for that item.
Thanks. Moving on, item B, Jericho and Orchard incentive request. Who wants to lead off with this? Rich?
This is a request that we have from the Jericho and Orchard Partners for the Ricky Rockets project. They've provided us with engineers' estimates for their overall capital improvement costs that have been included in your packet. Our review with our engineers indicate that there isn't anything that's of an extraordinary nature. It just seems to be improvements that need to be made as a part of a development. The only exception of that might be that you have a traffic light situation that would be the fourth leg of, of the four-way, or future four-way intersection at Rochester. But even that could be in a, a normal development situation that would be required to make that capital improvement. The, the good news is, is that with the overall development, there was an agreement for a payment for the detention facility, correct me if I'm wrong, but detention facility on the east side of Orchard Road that is controlled by the village. And there could be funds that come from that donation from the previous property owner back to the developer, if the village was so inclined, so...
Is this the banking, the wetland banking type of?
No, it's improvements, it's the cost of improvements to the overall detention facility. And actually, Pete can explain it a little bit better than I can.
So this was an agreement that was originally discussed prior to this developer coming into place. But basically, it was an exchange for the use of the village's property on the east side of Orchard, to allow for the offsite to tent, for the descent, and from the west side to go into the east side area. There was a value for that. But the contemplated agreement had always been to use those, that compensation as incentive to develop the intersection. So the agreement has not formally been completed, but it has been drafted. And I, I've lost track now, it's been so long, as to whether it was at the board some time ago, or whether we're going to have to bring it back again. But again, the, what was contemplated was a rebate, if you will, to the developer in, in the amount of approximately $230,000, I believe. There's some offsite detention improvements that need to be made, but the contribution was, I think, $180,000 less, the improvements that need to be offsite. So there was going to be a exchange or a return of about $230,000 in order to complete the interchange improvements at Rochester and Orchard. So that was the intention.
And this is an agreement that's already been approved?
Was it, Mayor, I can't honestly, I don't believe it, it was proposed with the previous landowners, and we just haven't had a chance to bring it back, because we haven't had it executed by the current landowners.
Correct. Yeah, it had been almost finalized and agreed to between the two parties, and then when this property was purchased, we had to rework the agreement to incorporate the third party. So it had gone back and forth, various iterations since then. So no, it hasn't come before the board, but I believe that that had been the understanding. I mean, that was three, four years ago, I believe.
And so the, so obviously, the funds from that we currently don't have?
No.
Right. Because the agreement hasn't been approved. But if that was the intent of the agreement, of the agreement, and this development is...
Basically, it was intended to be an economic incentive agreement. So what we wanted to do was to maximize the amount of developable property on the west side. Well, if they can move that to the east side, that means they can have 3.8 more acres of retail on the west side, which is to the advantage, obviously, of the village as well. We have a detention facility already that's occupied, so we can't do anything else with it. Can be deepened, though, and that was the intent. And again, in order to promote the economic development and recognizing the cost of the intersection improvements, we thought that that would be a good exchange to do that. So, there's value added to the west side, and the village isn't out of pocket any money, per se. You know, this is money, the value that's created just by using our own property.
Is anybody else involved in the payment for that road to Rochester to...
Well, the developer is going to be responsible for all of that construction.
So, the way I see it, if we can figure out this agreement, which I am sort of following, but I'm sort of not at this point, that seems to be the incentive of that, and that's fine. The rest of the request, and I do appreciate the petitioner itemizing this and bringing this forward, Speedway made a very similar request before they broke ground. These do not seem to be exceptional or extraordinary development costs, and would fully anticipate that the developer stomach these, especially given that to rebate TIF funds from this corner of this development would pull away from the improvements that we're trying to work on in the TIF area.
So, we would be using some TIF funds to deepen the retention?
No.
No.
The developer would be deepening the detention. What we're doing is basically allowing them to put their detention in the village's detention basin.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you for raising your hand, I would appreciate you hanging out with us all night.
No problem. And Mike McKinnon, Blue Stone Single Tenor Properties, I'll keep it short. So, the first phase of the development that we're contemplating was, as we discussed a couple hours ago now, the car wash, the fuel center, and the 10,000-square-foot retail center. As part of that, we're also constructing about $700,000 of off-site work, both at Rochester Road, Jericho, and on Orchard, in addition to about $200,000 to $300,000 worth of fees that we need to pay to Kane County Division of Transportation. And plus, we're doing the spine road from Summer Hill through Rochester. So, what we've asked village staff, and obviously yourself, to consider is to rebate a portion of the incremental taxes that are going to be generated by our development and to reimburse, because quite honestly, we can't, we can't fund that extra million dollars plus of incentives. Our development's going to, just the first phase of development's going to generate about $280,000 of incremental sales tax to the village, in addition to the $365,000 of incremental real estate taxes to be generated by our development. So, our development, once the first phase is constructed, is going to be generating $600,000 to the village of Montgomery. What we're asking the village is to help us offset that million dollars plus of, we consider extraordinary, Steph, and obviously, Mr. President, we're in disagreement on that. But we're asking for that portion of $600,000 over a series of years to pay us back so we can make this capital investment, employ people, and get this development started off the road. In addition to that, I apologize, it is a little confusing. There is a set, there is another agreement, the due-for agreement, and Director Young and I have a brief chance in the intermission at 9 o'clock to discuss. Perhaps, if I could, Mr. President, suggest that I get back with staff, and we come back with a comprehensive plan that ties everything together. I think right now, we've got two different items, and I think it might be a little confusing.
Okay. Does that work?
If that's okay with...
Director Young as well. I'm curious to see if, and I think it would be helpful for staff, if the other three board members kind of commented on, if you were so inclined, on the incentive request.
No. I'm not inclined for it.
To comment? Or are you just not interested?
No, I'm not interested in incentive requests, because, again, we've held our ground a little bit on areas that are, you know, being developed, and we didn't give an incentive to Speedway.
Okay. No. I agree with Trustee Marisack.
I guess, I guess I agree with them, although I thought other people were supposed to help with that road. So, their costs would go down, but...
I'm not sure what roadway, though. Rochester? Yeah.
Rochester going around, because we had that discussion.
The only additional information would be that the animal hospital is required, or is, yeah, required to put in their portion of the road behind their building to tie back into the service road that goes along the south side of their building, so...but all of the extension of...
Summer Hill?
I forget the name of the...
Summer Hill?
Summer Hill, thank you.
Correct.
To Rochester, all of that would be on this developer because it's servicing lots that they're creating.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's some serious development potential, right, west of the spine road, I think you referred to it as, going forward. But I do appreciate you bringing it. If you have more than open to, if there's a revision of this with the 240 and whatnot, absolutely, let's see if we can get that hammered out and move forward from there.
Sounds good.
Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is not time-sensitive, so we can forego it for now if you want.
Is there any opposition to tabling traffic analysis update?
No, actually, I was going to suggest it, because I think that was a Trustee Spurling.
Yeah, I think so. So, we'll discuss that at a future meeting. The first thing that I wanted to bring up under newer unfinished, and I wrote down some of my thoughts here, I wanted to kind of update the board on the situation that happened on Orchard Road last Sunday night on January 6. Obviously, we're all well aware of what happened, that led to a firearm being discharged at one of our restaurants. It's absolutely not something that is keeping with our values, and something that I think everybody in this room would condone, the owner of the establishment included, frankly. I've requested, or did request, and the owner agreed to 10 or 15-day voluntary suspension, so we can talk about this, and we have a meeting set for tomorrow. At this point, the owner's been fully cooperative with our police department, and obviously, has agreed to the temporary suspension. We're going to discuss this tomorrow. My goal from that conversation is safe dining in our community, and I guess my hope is that our attorney, our police department, and the owner can work together on a solution. If a solution cannot be achieved, then obviously, there's a whole process that our attorney can get into going forward. But I just wanted to update the board, I'm not, I guess, if you have comments, you feel free to make them publicly at this time, or personally to me or our police department ahead of that meeting tomorrow.
What I'm going to ask our village attorney, what are our options right now?
Okay, so obviously, the biggest goal is compliance. You know, everyone wants restaurants that operate safe, and everyone wants people in the village to be safe. However, if the owner is uncooperative, there are options that the village can take, most specifically, because they're not, because the village is non-home rule, we can't pull a business license, we don't license businesses, however, we do have control over liquor. So, what the greatest leverage that the village liquor commissioner would have would be to either suspend or try to revoke the liquor license. There is a process required for that, and then ultimately, the owner can appeal to the state liquor commission, but that would be the village's biggest leverage to do if, you know, you can't get a voluntary compliance from the ownership.
Can the board suspend a license, a liquor license, for a certain period of time? And if we can, what is the minimum and what is the maximum?
It wouldn't be the board that suspends it, it's the liquor commission that does it, but you can go up to 30 days on a suspension. Otherwise, you would do a revocation, which is up to a year, and then they can't serve for up to a year, or reapply for the liquor license for up to a year.
I have in front of me the activity report from January of '15 to current, and as I look through this, there's a battery, there's a battery, there's a battery, there's an arrest warrant, there's a fight, riots, there's a battery, there's domestic trouble, there's domestic disturbance, there's a burglary, there's a battery, there's disorderly conduct, there's domestic trouble, there's alcohol sale to a minor, there's a DUI incident, there's a DUI drugs, there's a disturbance, there's a theft, there's another fights, riots, there's domestic trouble, there's another arrest based upon a warrant, there's more domestic trouble, there's more domestic trouble, there's another DUI incident, there's a simple battery, there's a DUI alcohol, there's another fights riot, and there's another arrest type, and it's for a warrant. And so, all of these, we have, since January of '15, 107 calls for service, and I checked with the residents and did a poll, and there were approximately 685 people who voted in this poll, and 70% of them said that they didn't feel safe going back to this establishment. And it wasn't necessarily stemming from the issue that occurred a week ago. They have said that ever since this barn pub has opened, there have been issues. They'll come in, some residents have told me that they've seen bartenders doing shots with patrons. And as you look at this, the calls get progressively worse. We've given 107 chances for him to use corrective action. Chief, either you or Deputy Chief Sanders, how many times have you guys had discussions with the owner about this?
We've got three instances, we've talked to him, probably more that officers done informally, but three that myself or the DC are aware of, yes.
Has he taken the discussions that you've had seriously?
On a couple of occasions, yes. It seems that the instances had dropped off after the deputy chief had talked to him. I don't know what caused it to pick back up, but I do know that after we talked to him, that they dropped off.
There are a couple, couple words that were used when we were talking about this biocarbon thing. Matt had mentioned, is the reward worth the risk? So, we had two people shot a week ago. This is an area where kids can come across the bridge and ride their bikes and go to Walgreens, come down Mayfield Road, or Mayfield Drive, or whatever. We had two people shot. How much more serious does it have to get before we send a message that this is it? We need to figure something out. We need to correct the behavior, and then we can give them another chance.
Can I ask a question? So, this report you have, which I have a copy of, is the calls for service. Did you pull them for any of the other businesses in town? Just out of curiosity, I want to be fair.
No, no other businesses in town have two people shot in the last week.
The one directly across the street has had multiple incidents, and probably has, I'm guessing, I'm just guessing, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, chief, more calls for service than are on that paper, in that time period.
Have there been two people shot, and I'm assuming you're referring to Walmart?
I would prefer to not call out a local business by name. That would not be tactful. No, but somebody was stabbed, there was a riot. I mean, there's been multiple instances. So, again, I just don't want to single out one business. I don't want to single out one business without looking at all of them, then. If you want to look at police reports and incidents, then let's be fair about it.
The issues, everyone is telling me that the issues seem to start when this pub was put in place.
Prior to that, it was a carryout pizza place. What incident was there?
You wouldn't think there'd be incidents, would you?
You cut the line in front of me, so I whacked you? I mean, we complain and piss and bitch and moan about wanting a restaurant in town.
Do we need people to die to do something?
Those 650 people can go eat somewhere else. I mean, I know they don't like it, but, but they're going to buy somewhere else, so that's the way. Matt can kind of talk to them tomorrow and figure out what else can be done with the police department, but I was amazed at how many domestics, how many guys take their wives into a pizza place, or girlfriend, and then try and beat them up. That just doesn't even, domestics, I don't understand that. But at the same time...
Is that what a domestic is?
He's right, that there's other places that are just as bad as far as police go. Squad cars coming, where people tell me there's eight or nine squad cars trying to break up. So, we can't just pick on one business, we just got to make sure all of them try to improve.
I'm not saying shut them down. I'm saying pull the liquor license for a certain period of time, give it six months or a year. He, on his Facebook post, it says, "We pride ourselves in being a family restaurant." Would you bring your family there? If he prides himself in being a family restaurant, let him...
Give free pizza away?
No, let him, let him create a family image. Let him, let him repair his reputation. He can repair his reputation without serving liquor. Because what happens if in a week from now, this idiot who was never caught goes back in and does something else?
Can I just clarify with the chief, because I asked you a question, and you didn't get it? When it's listed as a, what's the term, a domestic, domestic trouble, is that a guy beating up his wife, or could that be a verbal argument call?
Most likely, domestic trouble is a domestic argument. Domestic battery would be where the individual is struck, either of the two parts involved.
There are a couple of those on there, too.
So, all right, so they're not all the guy smacking somebody around? Okay.
So, the one question, or the comment that I would make, and I appreciate your concern with this, and I share that concern. The implication, by using my words from earlier, that I'm not taking this seriously, that I don't ride my bike across that bike path to Walgreens and to Jimmy John's with my nine-year-old son, and could very well go to this facility or any other in the area. This is real for me, and it's something that I think everybody in this room is taking seriously, and we're trying to follow the law and do what's best for our community so that, so that this place is a better community to live in. I think what happened last week is something that nobody wants, and nobody wants to happen again. And it's, and it's our job to figure out where we draw that line, and if we have a willing partner with a business in our community that wants to improve the image and operation of this facility, then that's a good start, and we go from there. Any other comments on that, or anything else?
And we continue to complain, and we want businesses, we want restaurants on the west side of town, we have one. Let's look at trying to build that partnership to where it needs to be, because obviously, something has failed a little bit here, and I believe that the owner would concede that. But instead of pulling out the carpet from underneath them, let's figure out a way to give them an opportunity to rebuild that.
Let's ask him. He's here, what are your...
I don't, actually, I would actually not want to get into back and forth. I don't think that's productive. We have a meeting scheduled, and have every intention of following up with the board after the meeting tomorrow.
I think we're going to meet in the same place in six months.
All right. I think six months and a year are way too long, though. I mean, he's got to have more, he's got to have a chance to change, and he's better change quick. If he doesn't understand that by now, there's 650 people that won't go back maybe to him, so I think he'll figure it out. I think 10 days is a little light, but I don't think, and over 30 is a little heavy, so...
Yeah.
It's up to Matt.
Well, and the other thing is, there's plenty of locations in the area for folks to go to. They have options on where they want to spend their money, based on what happened, regardless of what we choose to do here. People might be making that choice to take their, their investment, their dining experience elsewhere. That's not what we want, but that's the reality of it. People have a choice to not go there, and that's another thing that I fear, and so the reason I say that is, the owner of this facility has every incentive to improve the reputation of that area.
You don't think that this hurts surrounding businesses as well?
I didn't say that. Anything else on this item, or any other item?
I'm just glad he's calling the police early, and some of these things get broken down quick, so our police should catch that guy.
Yeah. All right, anything else? I don't want to cut anybody off. I don't want to cut anybody off.
I'd asked Jeff, what was it, a week or so ago? What was Concord and Lakewood Creek stop sign?
We tabled those.
That was one of the traffic items.
Oh, okay, all right.
We will report back to you on...
And then I know, yeah, Teresa was interested in Mayfield, but, okay.
All right. With that, our future committee of the whole has been canceled. The village board meeting is on Monday, January 28, I believe. And it says Tuesday at 7:00 PM. We don't have executive session, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.